It is now time for the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education, an annual reorganization meeting. Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bonjovani.
Present.
Mr. Garmen.
Present.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Present.
Dr. Lowe.
Present.
Ms. Malley.
Present.
Mrs. Mangano.
Not yet.
Anybody here for Mrs. Mangano?
She'll be here.
Sorry?
She'll come.
She's on her way.
Yep.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor.
Happy New Year.
A quorum is present. Shall we rise to salute the flag and then remain standing for rendition of the National Anthem by our gribbling second graders? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you need that?
I hold it.
You hold it? All right.
Wait, no.
Hang on. Obviously, the roadies are not... One meeting out of the year, I get to do this. So, Jack Woods?
Yep.
Great job. Thank you. Paige? Wonderful. Beautiful, beautiful job. Danny? Parinella. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Hang on, turn around here. Ms. Gray has to take a picture. Same height as me. Thank you. Announcement by President Pro Tem Ron Sanasak, annual reorganization and regular meeting. Adequate notices at this meeting as required by Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, were distributed by the Secretary on December 20, 2018. I would like to announce that on November 6 of last year, we'll say now, there was an election, and at that election, the results were reelection of Jennifer Okerson and reelection of Mary Rose Malley, and the election to the Board of Mr. Scott Jeffrey. Congratulations to the three of you. If you would all join me. Do you have the oaths, Ms. George? I have it. Would you hand them out when you find it? And also Mayor of Elizabeth, and maybe the better part, Ms. Malley's brother, Mayor Chris Bolwedge, would like to have the honor of swearing her in tonight, so we'll do a little joint, and I will swear in Ms. Okerson and Dr. Jeffrey, and then Mayor Bolwedge will swear in Ms. Malley. So I guess you can sit and watch. If the two of you would at least raise your right hand, you have the oath in front of you. Repeat after me. I, filling your name.
I, Senator.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And the governments established in the United States.
And this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people.
Further, please, I say your name.
I, Senator.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of the Board of Education?
For the office of Member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1?
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in?
NJS-18A-12-1? And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office?
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you are reseated and seated as members of the Howell Township Board of Education. Say your name.
I, Senator.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey? That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same? And to the governments established in the United States? And this state, under the authority of the people? So help me God. I? Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications?
Qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education?
Prescribed by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified?
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant?
As a voter pursuant.
To RS-19?
To RS-19.
7:4-1?
7:4-1.
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime or offense?
Due to the conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJS?
Listed in NJS.
18A-12-1? And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office, according to the best of my ability, forever. You have family members you want in the picture, come on up. Did I see yours?
Yeah.
Ms. Malley, a picture of the two of you here? Want to have your brother join the picture? When you get back your sheets, please sign one copy of the oath.
My three-year-old. If I run again, I won't go pick her up by the time she's too big. So that was a one-time view.
That's a good three-year term.
Wait, one more. We take, we take, we take. Oh, wait, there's one. Thank you, congratulations. At this time, as my stint as President Pro Tem is squeaking to an end, it is now time for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Do I have nominations at this time? Mr. Garmen.
I nominate Mr. Bonjovani.
Mr. Bonjovani is nominated. Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. I will now take a roll call. A yes vote is in the affirmative for Mr. Bonjovani to serve as President. A no vote will be to nod and have another round. Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Mr. Garmen.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Congratulations. By a vote of nine votes in favor, none opposed, Mr. Bonjovani has been elected to be the President of the Howell Township Board of Education for the year of nineteen. Congratulations, sir. You now displace Dr. Jeffrey. And I will turn the meeting over to you, sir, and relinquish my role as President.
Mr. Sanasak, I believe we have nominations for Vice President.
Are there nominations at this time?
I'd like to nominate...
Mrs. Okerson.
Go ahead. I would like to nominate Al Miller.
I'll second that.
Nominated and seconded, Mr. Bonjovani?
Yes.
Are there other nominations at this time? Seeing none, should I take that around, sir?
Please.
A yes vote will be for Mr. Miller to serve as the Vice President for the year, Vice President of Howell Township Board of Education. Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Mr. Garmen.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Congratulations. By a vote of nine votes in favor, none opposed, Mr. Miller will be the Vice President. Mr. Jeffrey, move one more seat.
Everybody circle to the right.
It was nice having you on the board.
Congratulations, Al.
Thank you.
It is now time for the Superintendent and Board President's remarks regarding recognitions. Then we will move into recognitions and have additional remarks further in the meeting.
Mr. Isola. Sirs. Yes, thank you, with your permission, congratulations. Thank you. To all for being sworn in tonight, and certainly to Mr. Bonjovani and Mr. Miller on their Board appointments here this evening. So, the Board is obviously in good hands, and we look forward to a very successful year under your leadership. At this time, we will take the opportunity to recognize two individuals. We'll first do, we'll ask Mr. Farley to join us at the podium, as we will recognize one of our retirees who couldn't be with us last month, and Ms. Spadacino, who I think I saw came in, yep. So, come on up, Anna. Go ahead, Mr. Farley, take it away. Mr. Bonjovani, do you want anyone to... Whoops. That's a tricky one.
I did have a little help with this from some of Ann's colleagues, but here it goes. Ann Marie, Ann, Anna, Anna Marie, Ms. S., depending on how you know her, our friend goes by any or all of these names. Ann has been in the Howell Elementary District for the past sixteen years, transferring from Brick Township. She has been at both Memorial and Middle School North. She is the woman in the hallway with the bright smile to match her bright and fashionable outfits and nails. I did not write that part, I don't really notice nails, but I did have a chance to rough your grandson, and he's quite a basketball player, so that's the stuff I see a little better than the nails and the sweaters. Ann's love for her job is evident, and it's always inspirational to watch her with her students. She has unlimited energy and the patience of a saint. Throughout her career, she has been at many committees, run numerous sections of after-school clubs, computer club and cooking club, just to name a few. She also does a lot of tutoring after school and is always helping her students. On top of this, if she is not busy enough, she also works as a suite attendant at MetLife Stadium. Not a lot of wins this year for the Jets and Giants, so might have been a rough crowd in those suites. She's also a wonderful friend, colleague, and teacher, and her true passion is her family. Ann's limitless love and guidance to her children, Nicole and Fred, and her grandchildren Cameron, who's not here today, but Javier and Sophia, who are with us, is her true calling. She is probably the most giving person you'll ever meet, regardless of how tired or busy she may be. She never complains, she sees everything as a blessing, and puts herself last in order to take care of those she loves. It's been my pleasure to work with Ann Spadacino for the past four years. She's one of the teachers that certainly puts students first and was in it for all the right reasons. Congratulations, and best of luck in your retirement.
So that brick gets placed in our garden here, and will live forever, and then we have a replica of that for you as a paperweight, so you can use that. Congratulations. All the best.
Congratulations. Yes. Justin Storey. Great. Sorry, I missed you that day.
Go close your eyes. Congratulations. You want to say anything?
Sorry.
Go ahead, say something.
I just want to say that I've loved for the past twenty-six years what I have done. I've been very fortunate to wake up every morning and want to come to work. The students have kept me young and vibrant and smiling every day, and I consider myself very fortunate to have been in the profession I'm in and always will be. A grandma first now, and then a teacher. Thank you.
Byron, I'm going to have you come up. Jennifer. You're going to go up. Anna? Yes, you want your grandchildren to come?
Yes.
Come on.
Thank you.
Mr. Isola? For the next one, I'd like Mrs. Okerson and Mr. Garmen to join. This next recognition is a, you know, while there's always a little sadness and a little joy in a retirement, this is specifically and certainly a little different. Tonight, we will recognize the career of Linda Vella. I'll ask Mr. Bora, the Principal of Ramtown, to come join us here to talk a little bit about Linda. Unfortunately, we lost Linda to a long battle, and she's passed this past fall, and it was certainly, the Vella family's been a staple in Howell, a wonderful family, and their loss is our community's loss, quite frankly. But we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Linda this evening officially, do the brick ceremony, and we'll put that, we'll ask the family if it's Middle School South or Middle School North. I'm guessing South, since Ramtown was home base for so long, and this way we can memorialize our service to Howell Township Public Schools in the most respectful and dignified way. So, Mr. Bora.
So it's great seeing all of you out here. You know how I feel about you, your family, beautiful family, her legacy. So as most of you know, the Ramtown community and Howell Township family lost a dear friend and colleague in Ms. Linda Vella earlier this school year. She was a staple of the community as a parent, a grandparent, and a front office secretary. To Linda, her family at both home and school was everything, and her happiest times centered around the loving moments she shared with her husband, her children, and her grandchildren. She will be deeply, deeply missed by all who had the fortune and privilege of knowing her and calling her her friend. Personally and professionally, I greatly enjoyed my time with Linda and Teresa, my secretaries. Linda had a notable impact on me as both a principal and as a father. I greatly miss the many laughs we shared, often at my own expense and rightfully so. I just wanted to have a chance publicly to remind her family what a truly amazing woman she was, and tell you, her family, publicly, how much she meant to all of us, and equally important, what you truly meant to her. So, take this as an opportunity to remember her legacy. She will forever be loved. I loved her, I love your family. Once a Ram, always a Ram, and please stay in touch. We know, just know how much we care about your family.
I'm not official. Mr. Bora, you said it perfectly. Anybody who knew Linda knew that her family was the most important thing to her, and that includes her Ramtown family. Before her service as a staff member, she was a parent in Ramtown. Her kids went to Ramtown School over thirty years ago, so she used to tell me good times about how she was a PTO mom, and they would go to dinner dances and raise money to put the playground up and things like that, and she had such fond memories of that. And then she was lucky enough to work, you know, in Ramtown for so many years, and then my kids went to Ramtown. And to be a Ramtown grandma was such an honor for her, she would call me the minute they got off the bus and be like, "They're here, they're okay." And then we went to every Spring Fling, every Sing and Swing concert, every ice cream social that Ramtown had, because there were so many great family events, and she came to everyone. She wanted to come to parent-teacher conferences, and I said, "No, that's awkward, you can't do that, Mom," because you work with the teacher. She said, "That's fine, take notes and call me when you get home." And then the day that Anthony, my oldest, left Ramtown, she actually cried, and I said, "Why are you crying? We live across the street, you're going to see him every day." She goes, "No one is going to watch Anthony the way that I watched him in Ramtown. He's going to go off to the big Middle School South." I said, "Mom, I work at Middle School South." And she goes, "And your point is?"
Right.
She was such the heart of our family, and I know that you've suffered your own loss, and you had said at the meeting, you know, "Your family is broken," and I really related to that, and I'm so sorry for your loss, too. But our family's been really broken, and you know what? I was telling my husband, she left us two months ago, over two months ago, and there's not been one day in Howell Township schools that someone has not approached me to tell me their funny Linda moment, their best memory of her, or just to say, you know, "We're sorry and we're thinking of you." And that's because this Howell Township family really, really cares, and they were all touched by her. So there are so many families that were touched by my mother-in-law, and I just thank you for honoring her.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And, you know, you nailed it. In our stories, they live. Right? So, keep telling them.
Mr. Bonjovani?
To the family, I want you to know that you have the condolences of this entire Board. We understand that staff is family also. You know, we like to consider all of the employees of the district as family, so in some respects, we're also hurting for you and for our district, so please know, we continue to offer our condolences to you. To my fellow Board members, thank you for voting for me. I really do appreciate it. This Board is full of leaders, and it could have been any one of a number of us, so I appreciate the confidence. I think over the last couple of years under Mr. O'Brien's leadership, we've done some really great things, and I would think that that would just continue as a team. I really do think this is a team, and it will continue the fine work. I look forward to continuing to work with each of you. It's a position that's one of nine, and that's really how I'd like to view it. To Mr. Isola, you know the support that this Board has for you, and trust me, it will continue under this current new Board. Dr. Jeffrey, we welcome you, we look forward to many nights here at this table and at meetings, and sharing and learning from you also. And the last thing I'd have to say is, Mr. Miller, I can't think of a better person to sit to my right than you. I've seen the way you conduct yourself at this meeting, with this Board, and also with Monmouth County School Boards, so thank you for taking on this position. That's it.
Mr. Bonjovani, may I suggest a brief two-minute recess, so that people that are not here for the rest of the meeting can file out, and then we'll get down to the business of the Board. The Board is in recess, thank you. Back to the dais, the Board will be back in session. Mr. Bonjovani, the next section in tonight's reorganization meeting is B, Appointments and Designations. If we could clear the first three, and then it will be appointments by you, may I take a motion for the first three, sir?
Please do.
There would be one, two, B, one, two, and three. Is there a mover and a seconder? Moved by Ms. Malley, seconded by Mr. Thor. Respectfully, are there any discussions or comments on the dates, designation of locations, or the establishment of the existing Board committees?
The only comment I would make on it is that, based on what we have, all of Sturgis listed as the only Board retreat. I think part of that is that we also have strategic planning coming up, and in some respects, that's almost a retreat in it of itself, but I think that, I think once the Chair for that, for that, the liaison for the retreats is appointed, I wouldn't be surprised to see additional dates, one or two added for that.
And this is the annual notice, we can always add meetings as we go through the year, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
With that, may I take it around?
We'll get to that.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Also adding, we are adding the PLC to the committee list, Professional Learning Committee. That was a committee that was started last year as an...
That was ad hoc, you would like to make that standing.
Would like to make that a standing committee.
With that change, may I take the three around, sir? No? Is there more discussion?
No. Yep, please take it around.
Legislative advocacy?
Ms. Malley?
It is.
Yes.
No, it's not. Mr. Thor?
Mr. Sanasak, thank you. Could you walk me through this? Legislative advocacy is also not on there, and I would like to make that a standing committee.
Again, that was ad hoc, two standing.
That's right.
Okay, yes, then yes.
Good?
Yep.
All right, I will start over. Ms. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Garmen?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, but Labor is not in our current committees also. I just noticed.
That's a good catch. It's not on here.
Thank you, Hal.
Catch out.
Mr. Bonjovani?
We need to add Labor.
Yes, I'm going to make a statement. Is everybody satisfied with the list adding Labor?
Yes.
be at this time or would it be after the initial vote? What's protocol?
Right now, we're voting on standing committees. The president can always appoint ad hoc committees. If there were a suggestion for another ad hoc, that would be taken up by the president. If the board wanted to discuss adding a standing committee, that would be in order with a new motion.
Okay.
Mr. Thor, can we hold that for discussion items?
Sure. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Then we should go ahead.
With that, the numbers one, two, and three, the dates, the designation of the administration for specials, and the board committees, standing committees with labor, PLC, and advocacy added are approved. Nine votes in favor, none opposed. Mr. Bonjavani, the next several are appointments. If you are prepared to make them, you can read them into the record, and if you would like to do it later, that is...
No, I'll read them into the record because I'd like to make a quick statement about it. While board members are assigned to committees, I would also, I would also say to all the members here that even if you're not assigned to a committee, all of our committee meetings are open, they're certainly open to the public, and they should be open to other board members also. So, we do advertise on each one that there may be a quorum present, but no action will be taken, as you know, the action happens at this table. But I would encourage all my fellow board members that, certainly not to, not to put you out every night, but every once in a while, if you have an opportunity, if you see something going on on one of the committees, especially if you look at the agenda ahead of time and you see that there's something of interest, feel free to stop in and participate. I mean, everybody's voice should be heard at every committee meeting, so I would just mention that first before I do the assignments. That having been said, community interaction, I'd ask Mr. Thor to chair that along with Mrs. Okerson and Mrs. Mangano. Education, Dr. Lo to chair that along with Mrs. Okerson and Mr. Girman. Finance, Mr. Miller is going to chair that, Mrs. Malley and Mr. Thor are both going to serve on that. Operations, Mrs. Malley will chair it, Mr. Miller and Dr. Jeffries will both be on that. Labor relations, Mrs. Mangano is going to chair it along with Mr. Thor and Dr. Lo. Policy, Mrs. Okerson is going to chair that along with Mr. Girman and Dr. Jeffries. Legislative advocacy, Mr. Girman is going to chair that along with Mrs. Malley and Mr. Miller. And PLC, I've asked Dr. Lo to chair that along with Mr. Miller and Mrs. Mangano. I'm sorry, Mrs. Malley. My apologies.
Thank you. So noted. Moving on to B4, the appointment of national school boards. Do you have a name, sir, or would you like to defer to later?
For national school boards, I'm going to take that.
Thank you. Number five, the alternate to the national school board, sir?
Mr. Miller?
Number six, New Jersey School Boards delegate?
Mrs. Malley is going to take over as the delegate.
And the alternate, number seven?
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Number eight, Monmouth County School Boards delegate?
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. And the alternate, number nine?
Myself.
PTA, PTO liaison?
Mr. Girman.
That's number 10. 11 is the alternate?
Mrs. Okerson.
Appointment of township liaison, number 12?
That's kind of a split one in terms of the actual township. I'm going to take that part, but for planning and zoning, Mrs. Mangano had that last time, and I'd like to continue that.
Okay, then we'll have to come back to that after, after I've had some time to think at it.
Number 13, education foundation liaison?
It'd be Mr. Girman.
And the board retreat liaison, sir?
Dr. Lo.
Number 14, Dr. Lo. Thank you. Thank you. Portion C of the agenda, this evening, we have our esteemed board attorney, Mr. Wooters here. It is an annual requirement that we review the Code of Ethics, and he is here to briefly review that with you and give you the opportunity to discuss.
You should all have, first off, congratulations to the re-elected board members and to our new board member. You all are familiar with the School Code of Ethics. You all have copies of it. Just as a refresher, the School Court, the School Board, or the School Code of Ethics for school board members is found in state statute, which is 18A12-21, which governs the code of conduct for not only board members but administrators and other employees. But the Code of Ethics for school board members is specifically in the statute, and that's what you have before you. There are 10 items that is included in the Code of Ethics. You are required to acknowledge your receipt of the Code of Ethics annually, which you've done tonight, by signing a receipt. And by law, every year, at least once a year at a public meeting, you need to at least discuss the Code of Ethics. And so, that's what we're doing tonight. Again, the code is in the statute. You have copies in front of you. I think you all are familiar with the Code of Ethics. It deals with your interaction with the board and your interaction with the district, the fact that you're not going to do it for any kind of monetary gain, you're gonna maintain your independence. One or two of the 10 items which I've found to be ones that can be most problematic at times is, number one, that you'll recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education, and that you'll make no personal promises or take any private action that can compromise the board. In other words, everything that you do is through the board. You really don't have any power unless the board authorizes you to do something. And that you'll hold all matters confidential, whether you learn it during the course of interaction with administrators or through executive session, but during your time as a board member, you will become exposed to a number of personnel matters, financial matters, confidential matters dealing with both employees and students. And if, if there's one of the Code of Ethics that can be the source of problems with the Ethics Commission is the disclosure of confidential material. And we see a number of cases dealing with that. So, just as a word of warning. Otherwise, does anybody have any questions about the Code of Conduct or any of its requirements? If not, I think that meets the annual requirement.
Just, you do have a copy of an acknowledgement in front of you. Please make sure that you sign it and give it to Ms. George so that she can keep that on file to show that this took place in accordance with statute. And it is now time for the board to go into executive session. If I could have a motion and a second for that?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Malley, seconded by Mr. Thor. The topics this evening will be the HIB report, an update on a personnel issue, and the annual legal update of outstanding legal issues. The board is in executive session. And take their place at the dais. We are back in session. Shall we take the minutes?
Please.
Can we have a, excuse me. Mover and second for the minutes, please? Moved.
Second. I was waiting for you.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Malley and Mr. Thor. I won't pick favorites here. May I take it around, sir?
Please do.
On the minutes, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Girman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
She's just, she'll be back.
Oh, absent the room, I'm sorry. Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Eight votes in favor, none opposed. Correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. Mr. Bonjavani, your first board president comment, sir?
I believe I said what I had to say I said earlier, that I appreciate the trust of my fellow board members, look forward to continuing to work with everybody. I don't see a lot changing as this board continues its fine work. We've had a great relationship with administration. We've had a great relationship with the union. I would hope all of that continues. I don't have a lot more to add other than that. The only thing is, going back to the committee for labor, I withhold appointments on that until we work that out. Also, in terms of citizen appointments, I'm not making those tonight. I do have a list of some, but what I would ask you to do is make sure that an email goes out to any citizen members who were with us before, just reminding them that they need to get a letter in. And then, if there are any committees that are going to start their work right away, where we know that those citizens are either on it or are going to be appointed, I can certainly do that quickly and talk to you and Mr. Isola about that, and we can get those out. But in terms of the actual citizen appointments tonight, we're gonna hold off on that.
Thank you, sir. And an email, as is a matter of course for us, did go out today to all the existing citizen committee members from last year, encouraging them or asking them if they wish to stay on, to let us know. So, we should have more information in the next couple of days.
Great, thank you.
It is now time for superintendent's reports. Superintendent of school, Mr. Isola, your report, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sanzak. Thank you, Mr. Bonjavani. Just briefly tonight, first and foremost, a very happy new year. We hope 2019 is a peaceful and a successful school year for all of our staff and our students and our entire community. So, we look forward to being a part of Howell Township's success in 2019, and we look forward to a great year. Secondly, we are now, yep, just about a month away from our strategic planning. We'll be sending out, we got, we have received approximately 70 requests to participate, so we'll be sending out the response emails now that we're back from break and get things moving with that. Mr. President, certainly you and I will have a conversation about the next steps with that in terms of the board's interaction. Not all board members have submitted their request to be part of the committee. It's not a requirement, as to my knowledge. I think our last strategic plan, we did have just about the whole board, which was something we fought for. There was some debate with school boards about that. So, we have, I had checked with Kathy Weincoff, and it's okay if, it's the board's pleasure that all nine members be part of the committee. So, again, if you plan to join us as part of the strategic planning, just email Katie directly, Katie Gray, or of course, to respond to the email you received regarding that, which is strategicplanning@howell.k12.j.us, or just call me.
Mr. Isola, I do have one quick question about it, and you may or may not know right now, but any idea if we've, if any of our past students have...
Yes. Yes, I do have an idea. Do you want me to share the answer?
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, we do have some past students, two come to mind immediately, and there may even be more. One of the questions that we need to kick around is, we, in the past, we have not had current students due to the fact that we're a middle and lower, do, you know, is that something we wanna grapple with involving them and, you know, their level of understanding, which they've proven to be pretty competent, actually? But there's only been a request for one current student to be part of that process. So, we can either talk offline, you can make it a discussion item for later with the whole board. I'll leave that to you, sir. But with that exception, whether or not the rest of the board wants to participate and whether or not, you know, some of the finer details of the structure of the two days, we need to just sit and talk and perhaps call Kathy and get through that. But everything's moving well. We're ready to communicate out with the community. Last time, we had it five years ago, I think there was about 60 members on the committee. I think this, my latest count was 72, if I remember correctly from this morning, but 70-ish, so about 10 more levels of participation, you know, numbers of participation. So, I feel good about that. The staff and the school community, as well as the community at large, is certainly looking to have an active role in this, so that's good news.
Thoughts on current student? Dr. Lo?
Current student, my question, yeah, current students are fine. Just wanted to make sure, I'm sure it is, but just make sure that the people who are participating are reflective of the demographics of our district, that we have, you know, representation from, you know, all our demographic groups.
Yeah, so, it's an open invitation. We have not, nor do we, unless directed otherwise. I'm not anticipating closing out anyone. I'm gonna have everyone who suggested they wanna participate be allowed to do so. I have Ms. Gray separating from employees versus citizen members. Maybe that'll give us a better look at the level of representation from our community. Hard to gauge it by, just by pure name, but certainly, we're not looking to exclude anyone who cares to be part of it, and that's always been our work here in Howell. So, but at 72 individuals already, I think around 90 is the cap, according to school boards when I spoke to them. So, to put out a whole nother blast, you know, could create some, now we'll be choosing. And, but certainly, yes, I agree, Dr. Lo. We were very hopeful that it's a good cross-section of our community, obviously.
Mr. Bonjavani, when you were asking about former students, do you mean like people in ninth grade, or do you mean people like...
Like you, Ms. Okerson.
Like me? Yeah, exactly. That was my point.
I necessarily, I wasn't necessarily thinking of somebody who's reached your status, but I'm thinking of middle, of high school students. I'm thinking of, obviously, I was thinking, having sat here for a while, I'm thinking of students who have participated in our student board. I mean, we've seen some very bright children, so...
I know that the kids...
Come through that, so...
Our student board are still with us. Remember, they're fifth graders?
That's right.
So, they're only in seventh grade.
That's right.
And if we go to students, I think that'd be a great spot to invite some of the voice because they participate in the governance process a little bit. But former students that he referenced when I answered that, Mrs. Okerson, that was referring to former students who are still in school.
Okay.
But you make three that I know for sure. Patty makes four, right? So, but no, I know two high school students, actually, I apologize. Yes, two high school and a college student that I know of.
But I know that they were on our strategic plan for Freehold, and it definitely, they bring a truth to it that, you know, I think is kinda cool.
And we found that already, so, yeah, I would agree. Mr. Miller?
Speaking of former students, my daughter was on the last one, and she was a, I think she was a junior in high school when she did serve. My feeling on our current students serving on the strategic plan, I do think we should have them, and I think either seventh or eighth grade students, which would bring our, I believe, our first fifth-grade student, Board of Ed students up into that area. I think younger than that might, they might not get the understanding of it, so I would support either seventh or eighth graders. Because we did have, I'm trying to think of the student out of South.
Apana.
Yeah.
She's actually participating in...
Yes, when she was in middle school, she was very active...
On the tech task force.
On the technology task force with us.
Absolutely, sir.
And she did an excellent job, and she brought such great insight to that committee. So, I think putting someone like her or even, you know, a seventh or eighth grade student on that...
Yeah, wouldn't...
If it's, if it's the board's pleasure, we can certainly send an invite to, we still know who our student Board of Government, Board of Education folks were. It was only two years ago. We, they're in our schools still. We can certainly put an invitation out to their parents to allow them to participate, and I think that would give us a good cross-section. There were 15 people, youngsters, who participated that first year, so they're now in our seventh grade. If you remember, Mr. Daley was the superintendent. You guys wanted to give him a long-term contract, but, so that's the group we're talking about. And then, last year's group was also great, but they would be the seventh graders and then, you know, getting ready to go into that final year of our district.
But if that invite were to go out, I would make sure that the parents go over with the students, the fact that this is a Friday night and a large part of Saturday, that, you know, the attention span needed to participate. Mr. Girman, did I see your hand raised?
No.
I thought, I thought I did. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, so, again, that's... So again, that's, the board's pleasure, we'll certainly extend that invitation if that's, if that's the request of the board. We didn't want to go that direction, because we hadn't formally done that in the past. That would be a deviation from our practice, perhaps a very good deviation, but I wanted to make sure that the board was in favor of that.
Mr. Malli?
I just, as to your point about the commitment of time, perhaps there could be, they could just be invited for a Saturday session instead of the both sessions, in case, that might be more comparable to their availability and attention span or whatever.
Sure, and that's the day where we break up into our groups and do a little bit more of the committee-type work.
Exactly.
The first evening is, will be consumed a lot with our internal coordinators' presentation of the state of the district and some icebreakers and things of that nature.
Right.
But day two is, I think, where we do the deeper dive.
Exactly.
If I remember correctly.
Well, as I said, I'm fine with the students, but I think, I think we have to explain to the parents, because, I mean, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it, while the Friday night might be, but it is an overview. So maybe they're coming in on Saturday with just the committee work, but the overview of the district and the state of the district is equally as important.
And, and to your point.
So I think if you explain to them, this is the commitment, attention span or not, and if they're in, they're in.
To Dr. Lowe's point, I think that if we were to send out an invitation to those parents, my suggestion might be to have the parents contact Mr. Preston so that he could spend just a few minutes explaining to them what the process is. If they themselves have not been involved with it before, it might be helpful for him to give them the Reader's Digest version of, here's what's going to happen.
Or he can even set up a Zoom conference with them all at the same time.
However, he's fit.
But I just point to clarity, because I'm not sure that Dr. Lowe and Ms. Malli's statements conflicted with each other, and I just want to leave here with clarity. So point of reference, every other participant must attend both days or they can't do it. That's clear in our invitation. So it's a commitment to the whole weekend. Ms. Malli has suggested, and I recognize and respect that point of view, that perhaps just the Saturday would work for the kids better. I think I heard Dr. Lowe talk about a global commitment, and maybe I misinterpreted that. So just, please, give me some clarity on direction so we get this right.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I would just say, Mark, when your daughter participated, well, so that's why I wanted to bring it up, because it is a commitment.
Even though Friday night is a lot of state of the district and stuff like that, I think they do need to be present on Friday to get that background and get the understanding of what they're going to be doing over Saturday.
Mr. Mangan?
I'm in agreeance, I think if you're going to commit, you have to commit to the whole thing. It is a process, it's a big commitment, it's also a big learning experience for them, and I think they need to get the whole thing about and not just participate.
They also get comfortable with the adults that they're going to be sitting with, you know, with these small icebreakers and stuff like that. Because, I mean, they are, you know, younger students, seventh, eighth grades, so the icebreakers and stuff like that will get them more comfortable with the people that they're going to be working with the weekend, so.
Mr. Thor, Mr. Gurman, thoughts?
I agree with, I forgot to turn this thing on. I agree with Ms. Mangan's comment, that this is an important enough of a project that you have to commit to the whole thing, you have to be available for the entire dialogue or you're going to be unstoppable parts of it.
And I think it just reflects the fact that we don't see the students coming in as some sort of, as a token thing, but that they're full participants. And we noted that with the student government days, how the adults and students have interacted so beautifully, and we've all learned from each other. So we should all have the same experience, I think.
With those.
Yeah, I think Mr. Gurman's point is very good, is that it's inclusive, that they come on Friday night also, so that they feel part of the whole process.
Would those be the students that we might want to invite here, the ones who've kind of stepped up and showed some of that leadership, the student government leadership, on at least the middle school level?
I think we would invite the whole 15 from both years, and I think that those who want to be leaders and have exhibited some leadership will be the ones who volunteer. Because there is a time commitment, and because of what it entails, I don't think that the students who were, I'll put it as quieter, and there because they wrote a good essay, I think that those students probably won't be the ones who look to participate. I think we could probably guess who some of the students are. We certainly, we certainly saw a couple of voices that it wouldn't surprise us to see them step up.
He's talking about the Board of Ed kids for a day, not student government in the middle school.
I'm talking about, I am talking about student government.
No, not the student government.
No, but that's not who they're talking about.
The Board of Ed.
So it only would be going out to the kids that participate? Not student government?
I think the, I think the Board of Ed's, the Board of Ed Day. Because they've already been involved with us in some respects and have heard, in fact, that, you know, a number of them participated even in one of our retreats, and heard how we do our business and what we, what we think about, what we think about the district. So they would be a perfect fit to be able to add some voices in terms of this works and does work. Mr. Isola?
As a potential compromise to Mr. Miller's suggestion of seventh and eighth graders, if we want to invite seventh and eighth graders, the seventh graders would be our first-year Student Board of Education folks. We don't have eighth graders who have gone through the Student Board of Education Day. However, last year's student government participants are now eighth graders, so we could look at a list of students who participated in the Student Government Day for eighth-grade participation, and if we wanted to include seventh grader, we can then target our students who participated in the Student Board of Education Day, gets a little tongue-twisting there, but I think I said that correctly. And that would give us a pool of probably 30 invites, both inclusive of eighth and seventh grade. It would keep to the target that Mr. Miller suggested, and it would encompass students that represented both of those groups, which I think really did get to understand how government works. Just a suggestion, we can't, 6,000 students, 5,800 students, we can't invite them all, right? We understand that. And then we don't want to get into a situation where we're saying, you know, it's a lottery. We want it to be folks that we feel can contribute and have an understanding of the process. So those children have gone through some level of civics and government, and I think are probably best suited to participate with a readiness.
If it's the pleasure, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'm okay with that suggestion.
I'm okay with that suggestion, Rose. What Dr. Lowe said about the demographics of it being like kind of equaled out, is that it's kind of not equalled out globally, targeting those students. Although I think, you know, I think they deserve more of a place at that for an invitation, because they've been involved in it and have a whole bit more understanding. There might be students in seventh, third grade who have leadership qualities, whether or not, that could be benefiting from this meeting. Demographically, we want to make it equal, not to be equal.
Anyone?
I like your solution, Mr. Isola, I think that's fair across the board. You're including both the student government and the Student Board of Ed, seventh, eighth graders, just like Mr. Miller suggested. I think that's, I think that's a good compromise, and I would support that.
Yeah, I would support that also. I think it is a good compromise. I think that, you know, the fear is we just can't invite every student.
I think you have direction.
So, just want to walk away here with the right, with the right direction, not the right direction, but the understanding of the, of the direction I'm receiving. So we will put an invitation out to last year's student government seventh graders who are now currently sitting in eighth grade classrooms.
Mm-hmm.
At both South and North. And then our fifth grade Student Board of Education guys who were with us two years ago, who are now in seventh grade. And that is approximately a pool of 30 to 40 kids, I bet. So that would put us at that 90, based on who participates, that would put us probably at the max number, anyway, for school boards to conduct their work, so.
And I would, I would suggest that you and Mr. Preston work out the details in terms of how he would like to communicate with the parents to make sure they understand.
We'll draft a good letter, we'll invite them to a webinar of some type, I'm sure Ms. Engel could support that, whether it be a Zoom or just a webinar type of thing, where we can do a Q and A with them and some information, so that they have a full understanding of what they're being asked to participate in, and this way they come with a readiness and an opportunity to contribute. That's what we want, we want their voices.
Great, thank you.
Can I add also, if that pool is going to also be interested and not just there to, and fall asleep and be bored, so I think that using that pool is a good idea, because they've expressed some interest in doing this kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so if I may, then I'll continue with the conclusion of my report.
Please.
Thank you, sir, once I find my glasses. So that's the strategic planning update and conversation. I thank you all for participating and giving us some clear direction, I truly appreciate that. And then finally, the suspension report for December is coming around, Mr. Preston is passing that down as we speak. And during this previous period, the month of December, there were eight students suspended from school. And with that, sir, my report is concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzak.
It's now time for the committee and liaison reports. Mr. Bon Jivani?
I'm not sure that any committees have met since our last meeting. If there are any, please let me know and provide a report. I don't believe anybody has.
Seeing none, it's now time for the first public comment. May I, sir?
Please.
Whereas the Howl Township Board of Education determines that comments from the public may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with its Bylaw 164.1, and individuals may be limited to three minutes each, the officer with respect to time and decorum will be. The president of the board, Mr. Bon Jivani, may the floor be open, sir.
Please.
Are there comments from the public at this time?
Seeing none.
May the floor be closed?
Closed.
There is no unfinished business listed. I believe we deferred a comment from Mr. Thor to discussion, sir?
Sure. Yep.
Since we've done our committee appointments for the year, I'd like to discuss the exploration of creating a new ad hoc committee for this year that could potentially be a standing committee in the future. And it would be a special services committee. And this committee would be one that would not only deal with, you know, sort of what CPAC used to deal with, and special education needs, but also gifted and talented and some of the other special programs throughout the district. I think this one, there's so many parents who are passionate about this issue, either because of experiences they've had, or because they have children that are directly impacted, I think we'll have a lot of more involvement from the community. I think, speaking of this calendar earlier today, or earlier this evening, it could even be one where we have representation from each of the schools in town. That way we have demographically some good representation across the board, deal with all kinds of issues, challenges that might occur, but also be one where it could be used as a think tank, and some ideas that could help push the district forward in coming years. So I would like to explore, see that committee being explored, being launched for this year.
Thoughts?
I'm confused, what? Can you explain it again? It would entail gifted and talented?
This would basically be all special services, you know, all the special programs in town. Maybe special programs, I maybe need a more clear title for the committee, but basically dealing with the special ed programs in town, but also with some of the GNT and some of the, you know, exploring that program as well. So a combination of both, really, anything outside just, you know, general education. Well, a number of them. We have a number of special education parents in town who, you know, they've expressed issues over the years, and I think this would give them a kind of a platform to be able to speak to some of us as leaders and be able to share ideas. You know, I've, just from my own, things I've witnessed over the years, I've questioned whether, you know, some of our students, when they're going out to, you know, the high schools, if there is a little bit of a gap, you know, with some of the students coming out of the GNT program, you know, might be perceived and might not be real, but, you know, this would be a chance to kind of explore some of those ideas a little bit further on a more granular level.
Mr. Malli?
Could this be an arm of the Community Interaction Committee? Because that's what it's sounding like to me, like it's another type of outreach.
It could be, because it's an outreach, but it's almost a morphing of community interaction, education, probably those two more than anything.
Dr. Lowe?
Well, I guess my biggest concern mainly is, there's a process already in place in regards to communication with any parent, be it a special ed parent, a parent with GNT, our communication protocol that the Community Interaction Committee came up with, you know, it's there. So, and I know each of the PTAs, there's the CPAC group, they are, they do have the, I'm probably not using it right now, but they have the Special Education PTA. I'm using the wrong term. CPAC.
CPAC.
Yes, okay, all right then. By code, right, so.
CPAC does have a representative just to push it, they do have a representative at the president's council.
At the president's council, and they have meetings, you know, regularly, or they have meetings. Oh, God.
We've been working on building the membership.
Building the membership.
Something going out, we just finished the survey.
Yeah.
This afternoon, to go out, see if we can increase participation.
Do it in a little bit of a different way.
Maybe this will help further that cause.
Concern about the country. I'm just concerned about what.
More of a think tank than anything.
Yeah, but I, and I hear you. I just think we have a communication protocol, and any parent, regardless of who it is on any issue, you know, this district, as I've said before, we have much outreach and much communication and, you know, through administration, you know, that can contact. So I just would wonder, within our existing committees, like GNT is an educational program, like all the others. Special education is a service, but it's also a program in the sense of its instruction and so on and so forth. So I'm just kind of wondering, not that it's, you know, we have a lot of forums here for parents who.
This isn't for one-on-one, you know, issues, this is more of an overarching, just brainstorming, almost like every other committee that we have.
I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of parents, special ed parents, do participation. CPAC is, I was hoping CPAC would have a time. CPAC has the administrative, oh, I'm sorry, there is not a lot of participation.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we were sending out a survey and asking if we could get parents from each school to meet with the district Special Ed Administration to be able to just speak with us on a more regular basis about the needs from the community as they see it from each school. This way we have a representation from every building, and it would be more global information as opposed to particular children's, you know, things going on with your own child, but recommendations by building on programs and services and how we can improve and what we're doing well at.
That's exactly.
But that's what, but that is the purpose of the, that's what CPAC group.
So we have a real awareness here, just not CPAC does their own thing, CPAC, so the board's aware of CPAC's role, maybe we invited to come out to meetings here, speak a little bit about what they do, maybe answer some questions as far as, you know, what their kids have, you know, offered, their welcome to their children, different ideas to come out to all, I think would be more of a friendly kind of open thing where they have some representation on the board, versus just their own thing where they're not getting much participation.
Mr. Miller?
Could this be accomplished, and maybe it can't, through a liaison to CPAC? Like we have a liaison to the PTA Council and to the foundation, what about if we develop like a liaison to the CPAC? I don't know how CPAC is, I've never been to a meeting, if that, if they hold meetings, is it done like a PTA?
Because there's, I don't think there's meetings any issue, there's other issues where I come to special meetings.
So I'm saying like if, if we had a board member, say, assign as a liaison, they can bring all their concerns to us, or whatever it is.
So the, so.
Mr. Isola?
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
So the CPAC president, or chap person, I forget their exact title, I apologize, sits on the PTA/PTO president's council, and we have a liaison for PTA/PTO, last year it was Mr. Bon Jivani. Somebody was just appointed tonight, I apologize, I don't remember their recent appointments. So their leadership has an opportunity to meet with the superintendent monthly, at a minimum, and the issues, they, there's an agenda, that agenda is, I provide them with information that's happening around the district globally, and they also have the opportunity to ask questions and put agenda items on it. It's a collaborative agenda, they kind of make it, and this way I can come prepared, and I have brought individuals from the leadership team and school-level leadership to help present information to the the PTA/PTO Council. But certainly, looking to strengthen that would be great, you know, we're all about that. So I applaud the conversation, quite frankly.
I have a question, then I'll go to Mr. Gorman. Ms. Calendar, the survey you sent out, did you give them any-
We didn't send it out yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Fernandez and I were finishing it up today, and it, it's more than just about a parent group. We are also asking parents about what types of meetings would they like to attend, more of a forum for discussion, or more trainings and informational sessions? And then if they were interested in trainings and informational sessions, what topics would they like? And then would they be willing to serve on a committee that gave input back to the district? So we have, we've been working on that, but, you know-
Well, then-
Getting the, the parents to participate would be a great thing, but I just want you to know that, that we have to have something like that, which we have always had in CPAC, but because the participation has been diminishing over time, and I think the, the group has changed somewhat, and hasn't had an election in a while, et cetera, et cetera, we were going to try to make it more of an, an input-giving group to administrators, so we could have that back-and-forth flow of information and meet more regularly, but hopefully have, make sure we have a representative from every building, which is why we were going to try to get someone from the build, an involved parent from the building, PTOs, who could be a, speak globally for the building itself. And then any other parents, obviously, could certainly come, but so that we at least had the perspective from a parent or parents, involved parents in every building, so that all kids' needs would be brought to our attention if there was something happening, or, or something great that they want to celebrate, or want more of, to see more of, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, then, my question is, would you anticipate being able to have that survey done out and returned before the next board meeting?
Our, what I spoke to Mrs. Fernandez about today was to make sure it went out by this Friday and came back by next Friday, because we, you never like to leave a survey out for too long, because people don't do it.
Right, so we would have the results for the next board meeting?
We, we certainly should be able to have some results if people answer the, the survey. So we could certainly share that with you. But it's nine, well, it was nine questions as of this afternoon, pretty simple, but at the end, we were asking, because we wanted the survey to be able to be anonymous, if people wanted it to be anonymous. So they can either put their name on there, saying that they want to participate in the way I just described, or they can just email Mrs. Fernandez separately, so that their name wasn't attached to the survey they just completed, if they wanted it to be anonymous, and she-
Got you. Mr. Thor, I saw your hand back up.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, I mean, the idea that I've had, I've been thinking about for, you know, almost a year now, in some capacity, partially because what I was discussing last year, conversation I've had with Christie, conversations I've had with other parents in the community who, who, you know, feel very strongly on, on both sides, both on the, on the, on the special education, but also, you know, with, you know, Project Plus and some of the other programs that are offered. So I thought this would be kind of a good way to morph, you know, both of those concerns. And I just happened to talk to Ms. Calendar tonight, and it, just by chance, we're both thinking along very similar lines here, which is a positive thing, and I think that's why a committee like this, again, even if it's an ad hoc for this year, I, I think it would be interesting to see if we get that participation that we're desiring.
I, I tend to agree with something Dr. Lowe said. Some of the, some of the pieces that were mentioned here are pieces that have, in the past, and to me, naturally falls under education. One of the things I think that we saw last year that was very successful was, was a blending of, of joint meetings occasionally between finance and operations. This sounds to me as though, and again, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, it sounds to me as though, once some of the material is back in terms of the surveys, if we were to table this to the next meeting, not for good, but table it to the next meeting, and be able to look at some of that information, this might be a perfect opportunity for at least one meeting for community interaction and education, to have a joint meeting, to see where that would lead. And it may very well lead to an ad hoc committee. I would almost certainly think it would lead to a liaison, as Mr. Miller said. I think that, that would be, that would be a natural, a natural fit to have that happen. But I think, I think I want to hear more, but, but short of that, I really do think that until we get some of the surveys back, it might be one to table for the next meeting, but with the understanding that we would make some kind of decision then.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes. Again, I would agree with you, Mr. Bonjovani, and Dr. Lowe about the existing committees. Part of the issue is, how do we get parents who are interested in expressing their perspectives, their concerns, their aspirations? How do we get them to the meetings, first of all, to learn what's going on, for them to express their interests? How can we get beyond that, and so that we can do more? So it seems to me, part of it is, these, the education committee meetings are phenomenal, and if particular parents are interested in specific topics that either could go on the agenda, or already are on the agenda, we could, they could contribute by participating. So part of it is getting that message out to interested parents and, and community members to attend these meetings, when we have particular topics. The same thing could be said, again, as you've said, about community interaction. So there are so many ways of doing it as well, and then, as Mr. Bonjovani pointed out, you could have joint meetings. The other point is, what, what interests me is, we were talking about the needs of the, the whole community, the inclusive community, with a global perspective of all our programs and services. And so I think as we look to the special services, CPAC, GNT, I also would just as much, just as much, not more, not less, but just as much, like to see the attention placed on the general ed students, and their, the people in the community that have students in those programs as well. And so I think we really would want to make it a broader goal of trying to reach everyone, because that's really what we've been talking about for years. How do we improve our program? How do we have personalized learning? How do we have, you know, home learning, where the families can help the students work together with their children, you know? And I think we should be looking at it with a larger global perspective, you know? So whether it fits in with the education committee, the interact, community interaction committee, or even a special committee, I'd like to see it broader in its scope. And it means no one is left out, and everyone should be able to participate. But let's get everybody into the pot, as I see it.
Anyone else?
Again, my suggestion would be, wait until we get the surveys back. Let's table this for the next board meeting. It gives us all opportunity to think about it, talk to each other offline every once in a while, if we care to, and come back at the next meeting ready to make some type of decision on it.
I will, just so you're aware, I will not be here on the 23rd, but I will be available by video conference, if necessary.
That's great. That's great, because I think you had played an important part in this, especially since it was your suggestion.
Anything to increase the participation would be helpful.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Said anything to increase the participation from, from parents and families would be great. We would welcome it.
Mr. Sansek?
That concludes the discussion. Is now, if that concludes the discussion, is now time for the consent agenda?
Please.
If I could have a mover in a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Malley, second by Mr. Thor. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes, with an abstention on 3,000-1.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjovani?
Yes, although I'd like to recuse myself on 3,001, 3,003, 3,007.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved, nine votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions and abstentions noted for the record. It is now time for the second public comment. May I, sir?
Please.
Whereas Hal Tange Board of Education determines that comments may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 164.1, and individuals may be limited to three minutes each, the officer with respect to time and decorum will be the President of the Board, Mr. Bonjovani, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Still seeing none, sir?
Close it.
Floor is closed?
Move it.
Second.
You have a motion to adjourn? Good evening.